Good evening. I would like to call our regular city council meeting to order. Looks like we have a pretty small turnout, but we appreciate those that are here to pay attention and the few that may be watching, welcome. We have been meeting in closed session. We'll talk about that a little more in a few moments, but if we could have our roll call. Madam Clark?
Councilman Ziprick.
President.
Councilman Peterson.
Good evening. Present.
Councilman Peskew.
Here.
Mayor Perjemperi-Riggsby.
Here.
And Mayor Brower.
Here.
All present.
Our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Ziprick.
Stand please. Organically Father, as we begin another meeting, we ask that you be with us tonight, and we want to thank you for your many blessings to our community. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. This brings us to the part of the agenda for any oral reports, public participation, i.e. non-agenda items. This is the opportunity for that. I haven't actually received any cards, but we don't necessarily need that, so anyone have any items that they would like to speak on that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on from that. Conflict of interest is listed, and we'll let everyone deal with that as necessary. And that brings us to our scheduled items. And the first one is a joint public hearing of the City Council Redevelopment Agency. And I'd like to invite the Redevelopment Agency Chairman to call that group to order.
Okay, the Redevelopment Agency is called to order, and I pass the gavel to the mayor for discussion.
Thank you. This is listed on your agenda.
Do we have to do it now? Okay. Just a moment. I'll take it back for a moment.
Okay.
We do need to have the report of our closed session for the Redevelopment Agency.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were three closed-session items that the Redevelopment Agency Board dealt with in closed session. Two of those are listed on the agenda that was previously published. The first one was a conference with real property negotiator. Property is listed. There were directions given to the negotiator for the agency. There's no other action reported at this time. Item number two on the agenda was a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and on that matter, a decision was made and direction given to authorize attorneys to go forward with commencing foreclosure procedures on the property listed. The third item was added to the agenda. There were findings made that there was a need for immediate action, which came to the attention of the agency after the posting of the agenda, and that has to do with a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation under Government Code 54956.9A, Loma Linda Redevelopment Agency versus James M. Marshall, Shannon L. Marshall, Brian Fletcher, Jessica Fletcher, and those 1 through 50. And in that matter, the need was to approve a settlement agreement that arose from a settlement conference that occurred last Friday and which must be signed immediately. And the stipulation for entry of judgment will allow individuals currently occupying the property located at 25368 Durango Loop in Loma Linda to continue to occupy the property subject to all the terms and conditions of the CCNRs that were placed on the property by the Redevelopment Agency. That constitutes a settlement of that litigation, and a copy of the settlement agreement stipulation will be a public record upon execution by the agency. And that action was approved in closed session. Thank you.
It's yours.
Mr. Agency Chairman, since mainly on Redevelopment Agency, shall we just finish with that? Would you like that option to finish Redevelopment Agency?
You want me to finish the rest of the agenda? Well, all we have is the minutes after the joint meeting, so would someone like to move the minutes of February 9?
I'll move them.
Okay, that's a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Okay, it passes. And then we'll go back to the joint public hearing and then a joint meeting to follow.
Thank you. It's confusing even for us sometimes, different hats and jump around a little bit here, but anyway, back to a joint public hearing and so forth with City Council and Redevelopment Agency. Is there anything else then that we need to specify on 1A and B? This is all items that are, I believe, listed on both agendas, correct?
Yes.
Is there anything more we need to discuss under City Council Agenda G1? Or the action we took, take care of that with our joint actions?
That's a different property.
I thought that was the same property on Durango. I'm sorry.
This is the property next door.
Mr. Mayor, I had the same thought when I saw the name Marshall. I was confused for a moment, but those are different individuals, different properties. My apology, the name and the address, I thought were the same, too. All right, back to G1, Joint Public Hearing under City Council Agenda. Madam Clark, Agency Secretary.
This property, which is at 25388 Durango Loop, was purchased by the agency in December from the original owner. And we do have Edward and Melissa Marshall that have qualified as income-qualified to purchase the property. This is one of 35 homes that we have in the Parkside Track. There's 35 out of 58 homes in that track that we do have the long-term affordability covenant on. This is one of those homes. The new covenant will be for a period of 45 years, which complies with the current state law. By selling the home to an income-qualified buyer, we will retain the covenant. And by financing the purchase, we will, of course, act as the lender, which will forego some other issues that we had with outside lenders. The purchase price of the property is $165,000, and the potential buyers have signed the agreement, and they are prepared to sign the rest of the documents to open escrow as soon as possible. I can answer any questions that you may have.
This is a public hearing. I will open the City Council portion and ask the RDA Chairman to open the redevelopment portion.
So opened.
So we are in joint public hearing on, again, a little confusing, sorry for the confusion, but is on the City Council Agenda G1, Item A and B. Any comments under public hearing? Seeing none, close the City Public Hearing and Agency Chairman.
Close the Agency hearing.
Any further discussion? If not, I will ask for any action on Council Bill R-2010-6606. It's moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? The City Council Bill is moved and seconded. Any opposition to Item 1A being approved? Seeing none, it's approved unanimously. Mr. Agency Chair.
Is there a motion on Council Bills 201006 and 01?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, they are approved.
All right, that completes that item on our joint agenda. Next item is an item that has been around for a while, but for some of our citizens it may be relatively unfamiliar to them as certain aspects of this program. We are moving into a new phase and would like to invite our Fire Department Chief to take the lead and provide us information that I think will be of interest to all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You're right, in terms of moving into a new phase, we're in the, what I'd say, "go live" phase. Just as a reminder, when the fee for EMS service had been adopted by Council, subsequent to that, we had requested last summer from the Council to actually allow us to not enforce the fee until we could develop a comprehensive marketing program, some good online signup for ease of the community, really pulling together what we felt was a long-term program investment for the community rather than just simply billing the residents. That request was supported, and we have been working on that, and it's complete. The first notice or beginning of that community campaign came out this last week, and the city manager has identified March 1st as the beginning of the billing service. So through that marketing program, we've done some branding. The program will be simply Loma Linda Fire Medical. So as we discuss and communicate to the community at events and throughout the community, when we refer to Fire Medical, that is our EMS fee-for-service and subscription program. So branding it as Fire Medical, you'll see a theme to the literature that will be in the mailboxes as well as available at many of the public events we are at, and all has a similar kind of branding theme, as you see there. Again, we have initiated that citywide canvassing campaign again. We've also started to meet with targeted community groups and special interest groups. Really, a strong emphasis there is on the retirement community. The membership is really critical for our Medicare, Medi-Cal, and retirement-focused element of our community, so we're really hitting that element of the community. We also have done some work with web-accessible program information and enrollment. This can happen through lomalindafire.com or just our city website through the Fire Department. There's some very, very clear links to additional program information. Sign up a list of the most prominent standard questions and answers to give more information about the program. While we've gone through this, probably the biggest question we face, as we have through the months, and so now that we're actually to go live, is a question that, not surprised that I've received a couple, and that is to, does my tax pay for this? Don't I already pay for this service? So I thought I'd spend just a couple of minutes, although we've covered this a number of times, just a little bit of reminder for those who are watching to discuss a little bit how our local services are funded. We have a map that really shows the boundaries of our city. You'll see some colors. Really, the white, without any shading over it, is just our, say, the normal property taxed area. A little bit of a red shade to it, that is the RDA area. Now, that is impacted by tax in that when the RDA was created, there was a firm base created that the increased value upon that does not go to General Fund, goes directly to the RDA. Additional colors, you'll see some government in blue and nonprofit in the lime-green color. So that gives you an indication of, okay, what element of the community is under typical property tax scenario. Now, even then, that 1% property tax, what really comes back to our community is just a little over a tenth, I think, at .11 or 11.11% of that comes back to our city. When you compare that around us, it's a drastic difference. I think the closest one I could find was 16. It went up there, 19, 21, 24%, that comes back to the cities. So our community, our councils, our city has funded essential services on a pretty slim margin of property tax that actually comes back to the city. The previous city manager had asked us to do some work. Well, what is happening in revenue, in revenue sources? What is out there? How are these essential services being funded throughout our region? And doing a survey, we found there was a variety of utility users' tax, paramedics' service tax, EMS subscription programs, EMS first responder billings, Melrose taxes, and other cost recovery programs. Those were a variety of things that were in play out there to consider as possibilities in our community. We looked just right next door. On top of the higher percentage of pass-through property tax, our neighbors Redlands had, you know, had several fees there for paramedics, as well as some other cost recovery for another $1.2 million. Colton, they had had a utility user tax in place, eight elements, total of $3.6 million to the General Fund. Sherman Adino, they ran an EMS subscription, a first responder fee, and also an additional sales tax in their community. Ucaipa, a paramedic tax, and as long as some Melrose taxes on some of the communities for nearly $1 million. Rialto had a utility users' tax, also an EMS subscription, and they actually do have an ambulance-transportation program within their city there. So looking through the region, we found, you know, multiple, multiple sources being in play. Go ahead.
And you made the point, and it's got to be made again, these fees are being charged by these other cities, even understanding that they get a much larger percent of the property tax than we do. Redlands gets 24%.
That's true.
We get 11%.
That's true. So that's what we found. Those options were presented. The city manager had asked us to go ahead and look in more detail into a fee for our EMS service, and from my perspective, there were several reasons. One, in looking at the delivery of our service, roughly 25% of that service was delivered to non-residents of our community. So people, an element that does not contribute to that tax base. In addition, there is some perception of a, well, that's a fact, there's a business element in our community that does quite well in private care and elderly care, and we did receive a number of phone calls from residents who felt, hey, on my street, I pay property tax, and I might use your service once in my life, maybe, and I see you across the street fairly consistently. Is there any difference or change there? So that was a consistent question that was being asked to the councils as well. In addition, they looked at instead in terms of a broad-based tax, something that really looks at the end-user for some of those reasons. In addition, medical insurance companies pay a variety of portions of this, some from a full, others that don't cover it at all, and the whole gamut in between. So I think for a whole variety of reasons there, there was support for this type of fee with a corresponding membership insurance to protect our residents from that fee versus a broad-based tax. I let any of the councilmen certainly discuss any of their positions on that, but that was my perception from the dialogue I heard in council, just to remind the folks how we've gotten to this point. So we did go ahead, and they elected to support that program, and that's where we're at. Now, we talk about investment. What does that, what does this subscription, this fee, what is that really, what am I paying for? Well, roughly 10 years ago, the council made the move to provide first response, advanced life support, paramedic services on our engines. Typically, prior to that, our Fire Department responded without advanced life support capability. And what does that mean? A basic life support, someone that can certainly do some splinting, bandaging, you know, spinal mobilization and CPR is kind of the basic scope of practice, to something that's probably three pages of detail of practice, all the way from, you know, certainly cardiac monitoring and defibrillation and cardioversion and intubation, just the list goes on and on on what the paramedic scope of practice. It was pretty clear that that's what residents really expect is coming, is being delivered to them. It's really, paramedicine has become what is really considered an essential level of service. You can see with the General Fund, the property tax challenges, it took our community longer than many others to actually achieve that, but roughly 10 years ago, we did achieve that. We put that level of service in play, and truly, the program has evolved to be one of the premier services in the town that the city delivers. I can speak, to this year alone, it has been, I mean, the positive outcomes we've had this year are off the charts. I can tell you, probably more people than are in this room tonight that are alive because of our program tonight. There was, just off the top of my head, I remember a two-year-old drowning, not breathing, post-traumatic on arrival, walked out of the hospital a day later. Two or three full arrest saves that have come back to our department, maybe four or five, actually. A traumatic, it's actually a dental student, critical trauma. He was deteriorating on scene. We actually, our medics performed a needle decompression. He had a pneumothorax. By the time he arrived to the hospital, he actually delivered a viable patient for our ER and our medical center here to work on, and that's really what we've offered. We've had a hospital, certainly, you know, renowned in the Level 1 Trauma Center and extremely capable, yet we were not necessarily delivering the most viable patients we could have from our own community to really the best medical resource in the region, right down the street. We're doing that now. One really successful program that the counties move toward is cardiac receiving centers, and much like the trauma receiving centers we've had for years, when our medics in the field now read the 1280KG and with the appropriate findings, the ED, the cardiac catheter lab, they activate. We now take a patient, you know, almost through the ED with very little ED assessment time to definitive care at the catheter lab. We're keeping stats on door-to-balloon time, and I believe some of those things that the region has moved to or the system has moved to is finding better outcomes, and the citizens in Loma Linda, with our ETAs, our destinations and transport times to that kind of care, truly, the combination of our service and the capability of our facilities here in town have created really one of the most capable systems in the region. So that's kind of a description of what that investment, what that shift has brought the community, and it really has been, become one of the premier services we deliver to the citizens. The council put that in play. It's, they did not, they did not create any funding source at that time. In fact, if you look at when this funding mechanism or our system of funding was created, and it was way before I could find anyone that had knowledge, so 30 or 40 years ago, if you think of what public services were at the time, you might have, they had guys that would show up to put out a fire. What did law enforcement deliver? Did we have animal control at the time, and what did it look like? You think of the whole array of public services and when that system was created, and unfortunately, when we got locked into our 11% of the 1%, what the complexity of life in our community looked like versus what we are today and what we deliver, it's a big drastic change. And never has there been any funding source identified to cover any of those additional services other than the property tax. I think our culture of our councils is historically, as is it is with this council, very careful and conservative about making those decisions of any additional fees, but felt like this program was the most equitable to put in place at this time. So those, that should, the phone calls, it's really been only a couple. Julie's answering well over 100 calls a day since, I think, the residents got their first card. That might speak to, you know, roughly a year ago when I sent out a, just a typed-page letter, I'd see a letterhead, asking for public input to this decision and where, how we form, where the program might go. We had very little. I suppose the marketing people, they know what they do, and that card hit the mail and that we've received, Julie said, probably, I think, over 100 calls Monday, Tuesday, so far this week. So the memberships are trickling in, and again, March 1st is the first date that we will actually enforce the bill, the bill of the fee that has been adopted. Glad to take any questions.
I'd just like to thank you for your report and maybe amplify on a couple of issues. I do think it is key to look at the long-term picture and would like to again reemphasize that as we move into our budget discussion very shortly, I was just going to the page with our budget for this current year, and our largest expenditure is for public safety. There's no question about it. Our biggest expenditure is for Fire Department public safety, 35% of our budget. We, as a community and as a council, as Chief Bender mentioned, made a determination that we were going to provide the best first-class service that we could 10 years ago, and we recognized that it would be relatively expensive, but we felt it is worth it, and it's an expenditure that is entirely appropriate, but there was recognition that long-term, there's no way it could not result in some way of recapturing some of those expenses in some form or fashion. Does it make sense to enact a tax or fees that aren't in relation to those that are using the service? I think this council's decided, no. We've targeted an approach that will hopefully capture those that are using the service in a few instances, as is pointed out, have your use, and those will demand higher payments for that. And does it also make sense, yes, I know some argue, a fee, a tax, which we all hate, but on the other hand, many insurance entities do pay for bills for the service. Does it make sense that we, as a city, don't capture some of that funding that is out there? Remind everyone, every time there is an emergency medical call, ambulance rolls from AMR, which holds a contract from the county. Last I heard, their bills are in the $500 to $600 range, and Chief Bender says I'm behind the times even substantially higher. What's your latest numbers you're hearing?
I think an ALS rate is in the $800.
Okay. So the point being, that is getting billed, and insurance providers and other entities are paying for that, so does it make sense for we, as a city, to provide some of that same essential medical service and not get paid for it? And financially, I think we're in a position, we have no choice. So anyway, just wanted to amplify on that. So, anyway, just want to amplify on that. Further discussion by city council and so forth. Councilman Zipri.
There had been some discussion. I was in one group earlier today in another nearby city that was discussing this general issue. And then I've heard some comment just in the media, because apparently some cities are going now to starting to charge for what they call cleanup of accidents and also fire calls. And there's been concern expressed in the media that, Southern California, some cities are talking about it. I didn't know, Chief, if you had heard much about that. I haven't heard that brought up as anything that we're interested in here. I just want some reassurance, maybe some information, what you've heard about that.
There is, there's a, there are programs with fees because you can, from auto insurance and those recover some dollars from accident cleanups. When there are spills of fluids and things like that, there's cost recovery mechanisms, some funding sources identified. And so, there's a popular trend towards those type of programs. We haven't presented that, anything like that, to the council for consideration yet, but there are those types of programs out there, yes.
Is Los Angeles one of the cities doing that? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I know that that's where the citizens start to get restless, is they feel like there could be a lot more fees getting added. And so, I hope we can, if we can hold with this one, it would be a good thing. One question, if somebody is a one-time user in their life and pays $40 a year, and then you have somebody else who uses the service, maybe one of the special homes or something, that uses it a great deal, is their fee going to be the same, basically?
Well, to speak to that comparison directly, in the resolution, we did identify, say, the private care homes, I assume you're referring to. We identified each resident bed or patient bed or customer of the business, might you, as an individual residence. So, in that scenario, say it's the maximum, six patients. All those patients, we are extending eligibility to those patients, but the business can't sign up simply as everyone in this household is a member of this family household, where the neighbor across the street can. Everyone under that $48 free fee in a standard residential home is covered under that. For a business like a private care home, we've identified as each one of those beds requires its own membership if, again, they choose to be members of the program. We've also extended that same, the option of membership and the same protections to our convalescent community as well and identified those patients in that same, in that same way. Sometimes those patients are here for a while. Certainly, a lot of times, it's not their choice that they're living in Loma Linda. So, we have extended the same protections that we would allow our residents and would like to, you know, our attention is to work with the management and the staff that when a patient enrolls at those facility, they are made aware of those, you know, the membership protection if they'd like to take advantage of it.
So, if you had a, like an Alzheimer's facility, how would you sign them up? You'd have to go to their conservator or something like that?
Yes.
And so, they're being made aware of it so they could access it?
And again, just to reemphasize, as part of the extensive discussion we had when this program was passed over a year ago, obviously, there's also economic hardship provisions that we clearly have in place for those that are not able to meet their financial bills for such services. Additional comments, discussion from council? Councilman Peterson?
I just couldn't help but make one remark, and that is, you mentioned when you gave your little talk that we all hate taxes. I don't count myself in that group. I'm a happy taxpayer. I think this is a huge bargain. For the small amount of taxes that I pay in this state and in this country, the luxuries that I reap from that, I can't even put a figure on it. I don't begrudge a dime, but I think it's a great bargain myself. No place in the world can you live like we do for the small amount we pay.
Just in response to that comment, I don't consider this to be a tax. And I know a lot of politicians around the country, they put on user fees and they say it's not a tax. Well, if you're just a taxpayer, you're funding a lot of healthcare that's not being reimbursed. This is, if anything, it's an anti-tax. It's reimbursing the people who are being taxed for providing services, billable medical services to people that their assurances can pay for. So, if anything, it's the, it's the net equivalent of an anti-tax because it's a user fee for services that ambulance companies can't really provide. They can't provide as rapid a response as we can because we're here, we've got two stations in town, we can respond to anybody within, within a fairly good period. And it's, like Floyd said, it's a great bargain. And if you get billed for one of these runs that we do and we save your life, you know, enjoy the rest of your life for the nominal fee we've charged. If you want to join and get a membership, then enjoy never being billed for the services we provide. And if you pay $48 and never receive the service, thank your lucky stars, you never needed it, but that's what insurance is about. So, I think, I think this is a good program. There are a lot of, there are a lot of people who, you know, have a libertarian bent who say, you know, we're double paying, we paid our taxes and we're paying this. Well, you don't have to pay this, you know, it's an option. You know, we can just bill you when we make a run and that's one of the options. But your tax money is going for other things instead of paying for these services after this program is in place. So, like I said, it's an anti-tax and we can have a debate on that if anybody wants to talk to me. My contact information is on the city website. Love to debate.
Actually, I might inject a few comments about one of the points you made there and the ambulance company. One question, and Councilman Pupescu has gotten a couple of them recently, and I think you've all probably heard it over time, as I do as well, is, okay, am I just funding this big fleet of people that show up to, you know, this EMS call? You know, four or six people, why are we doing that? Well, there's a variety of reasons. Or why do I see a fire engine showing up? Well, that's what we do. We don't have a double system. We don't have one department that handles the fires and another set of staff that handles EMS. We run what we, you know, was really been demonstrated as the most efficient system is a cross-trained dual firefighter, paramedic staffing. We don't, you know, we go from call to call. There's times where your units aren't back in the station for a good part of the day at times, believe it or not. And they stay with their apparatus and they respond to any call type in that apparatus. And then the question comes, why? There's a truck and the medic squad and why is all that? Well, we run a pretty lean staffing model. We run three-person staffing on that engine. That is all there is there. There's typically, say, on an engine, our liner truck, a captain, engineer and a firefighter, paramedic. To our higher acuity EMS calls, I mean, the goal is to have two medics on scene. When a guy needs to establish an airway and another guy needs to establish, you know, IV access and deliver medications and make base station contact and work with the physician, there's definitely set roles for all those people. We end up in many situations where it doesn't happen conveniently downstairs in the living room where someone can stand up and get on the gurney for you. And there's many times we're managing airways and people down quite narrow stairways that go down and it really gets awkward. And to move weight that cannot assist you, it takes bodies to do that. And we never know when that instance is. Now, one thing we are doing with the implementation of the CAD, the new CAD, the computer dispatch over at our comm center that happened this year, along with that comes a better system of, it's the pre-arrival medical instructions and information. And so, we can now, our dispatchers can do a further level of questioning to the patients and there's a decision tree that goes along with that with better recommendations for response. And I think generally that will break out to our cardiac respiratory, any call that is obviously, can result in a higher acuity patient, we will be able to tier our responses. We didn't have that previously. So, that should make us a little more efficient moving forward as well. So, that is coming into play. So, although it appears that we're running a fleet down the road for these things, there's reasons why. I don't, we don't put four-person staffing so one engine can go handle that medical aid. That would staff that four-person 24/7 and, you know, although those are recommendations, we just haven't been able to get there. So, that's a question I hear often and a general answer. So, I'd be glad to answer it again if any of you get that question. I'm sure you will. Go ahead and refer them and we'll share that information with our community.
Chief Bender, the only other nuts and bolts type question I had, just thinking about, you know, I got this card in the mail last few days, like I think everyone else did, and it kind of gets tossed in the pile of mail at home. Would it be easier or more practical if we, in essence, sent out like a bill with an envelope that you check if you want to pay it and close your check? A check you don't want to do the subscription thing? Would it save phone calls, people going online? I don't know. For me, it seems like if I saw something that looked like a bill, I have the choice to pay the subscription, don't pay it, but at least I have it there in front of me to do it. For me, that's easier. I don't know, just throwing that out.
Like newsweek magazine.
Yeah. Put it back in the envelopes.
Doesn't sound like a bad recommendation.
I don't remember getting, by the way, I don't remember getting this in the mail.
It's been the last couple of days.
There's actually, as the marketing program goes, there should be one every, two more of those cards. So, that's part of the mail blitz.
Well, anyway, tonight, obviously, this is a program that, as we've mentioned, was voted by the council and implemented a year ago, last January. We have moved cautiously into the implementation phase, which we are now doing, and working on keeping everyone informed and making this as easy for all to understand and participate. There's no further action, as I understand it, that we need tonight. It's simply a presentation again to educate everyone and inform the council as well as to where we stand. Councilman Pupescu.
Can you share with us, how many people have so far signed up for the program?
I think 50 over two days.
And do we have any indication as to what type of response that is versus other cities that have started a similar program?
No.
But it is somewhat encouraging that people do recognize the benefit and their...
They do. And I, you know, the majority of people, they call and they understand and they certainly, they value that service and want to support that type of a program. Again, there's been one or two questions certainly as to another fee at this time type of questioning. So, I've had a couple of discussions. There's actually another good question, and that was of the veterans. And in discussion with the city manager, I think we will make contact with the VA and share so there's an understanding with the VA community. I think that question is, what have you worked out with the VA? We didn't, we did not make any special arrangements with any one insurance provider, the federal government, the VA system being one of those, we haven't. But I had two or three of phone calls enough to certainly alert me that perhaps that might be valuable to at least approach the VA, get their recommendation on how, whether some sort of a contractual agreement on a large basis versus the VA handling, you know, not, you know, multiple incremental ones. I don't know, but I think we'll approach the VA administration about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The one question I have is, there's going to be a fair number of people who aren't going to be aware fully of this because it takes time for word to circulate through the community. I know a year ago when we discussed it, one idea I'd raised was for the first period of time at least, or when people get their first bill, allow them to sign up then. The problem I'm concerned about is there's going to be a fair number of people who simply are not going to be aware of it. And the notice period right now is less than 30 days. And that's, that's kind of a less than normal. Usually, people get 30 days notice. I'm just wondering, maybe it's impossible to do anything about it now, but...
There is, there is that option in the resolution amendment before you tonight?
Yes.
To consider that as well?
To allow people to sign up with the first, with the first call. I think, I think we should bring that forward and pass that.
It's before you.
You're recommending that?
Yes, it's item number 11 on the consent calendar.
Because I, we talked about that last year and it got rejected. So, that is being supported now?
Let's pull item 11 from the consent calendar and then discuss that right now since we have that on the table, so to speak.
I'll move that.
So, that's item number 11. The item has been moved and seconded and relates to, again, the issue that we're just talking about and further implementation of issues and so on and so forth.
I can go ahead and capture the other minor changes that were brought forward. And we recognize though, as we, as we were operationalizing things, one of the big things was the finance department was able to check in and realize that our software would track multiple renewal dates. For example, initially, it is structured that there was a one-time-a-year membership and if you didn't sign, you know, subscribe at that point in time, there'd be a late fee. What's brought back before you tonight eliminates all that. The finance department realized that simply when you sign up, you can have an anniversary date one year later and our system can track, you know, those. So, every month, we will have a, you know, a set of renewal subscriptions. So, that was, you know, probably better for the community as well as simply, better for management as well. The other would be the concept that Councilman Zipri discussed as well. Those, those were the big changes there, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. The actions were moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I was just going to say, I don't know if it needs to be a part of the motion or action, but I'll be frank with you. If I'd have gotten this in the mail, which I maybe did, I don't know, I don't remember seeing it, it very likely would have went straight in the trash. This, I would take one glance at this and I would say, you're either raising money for some natural disaster somewhere or you want me to join some organization, which they do, join something, but I would have, probably. What we need to, there needs to be one, at least one official, just an invoke with a city, official letter from the city going out to everybody, needs to be that, I think.
We can do with the next utility bill.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Make it in the form of a bill, so at least you have...
Just write in there, just an official letter.
That'd be helpful. Because I got, I got the same thing and I recognized what it was from the discussion last year, but if I hadn't been in on this, I wouldn't have had any idea.
Yeah, it's been over a year since I had that discussion and 99% of the population, I'm sure, wasn't privy to all that. Anyway, we have, as listed on our agenda, item number 11 moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that carries and again, that's just simply making a few modifications to try and implement the implementation of this program. And I'm not going to read the whole number of pages, but it is there if anyone has any further interest. Any other comments on item two? I think we've discussed that and made our viewpoints known and hopefully provided at least some limited direction and informed the public, and that's the intent. And that's the intent of that. Seeing no further comments, we will go on to item number three with permission of City Redevelopment Agency Chairman. We will turn this item over to our finance director to give us a mid-year budget review.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As you said, this is our mid-year budget review. So as in previous years, we go through a PowerPoint and then we can discuss specific items. And I think specifically we'll go over the general fund to discuss the changes in our fund balance of the general fund and the deficit that we're looking at. So as we always do, we discuss the general fund, the city as a whole, and then we discuss the redevelopment agency, just to show the changes that we're proposing at mid-year and highlight those. This is the general fund, this is just beginning fund balance. And as you'll notice, when we adopted the budget, we had estimates for fund balance, what we were projecting our ending fund balance would be or are starting for this fiscal year. Once we do go through our audit and stuff, we have an actual number. So this is the revised beginning fund balance for the general fund. As you can see, we ended the general fund fund balance with a higher beginning balance by about $666,000. And then here we'll go through what we adopted. When I refer to the adopted budget, that is what we originally adopted plus any adopt, any changes that have been adopted by council through the mid-year budget. And then the mid-year budget that we're proposing includes any changes we are currently proposing. And I'll go over those with the revenues and the expenditures. So this is our general fund revenues. We highlight the top seven revenues, which make up about almost 80% of our general fund revenue sources. As you can see, as when we adopted it, we were at 13.9 million and we are proposing a reduction of about 13.8 million. And then you can see the individual changes. We have a sales tax, we're actually proposing an increase. And then the other significant one is property tax where we're proposing a decrease. As expenditures, we categorize them by, by the functioning departments. And you can see, we're only proposing an increase of 40, I mean, $34,600 from when we, what our adopted budget is. So the most significant ones are for community development to do the housing element that needs to be done, which would be about $15,000 for that. So that's half of the proposed. And then for fire, we have $9,700. And that's, we were called on some abatement issues, so we incurred expenditures to get some property abated. But we will have some offsetting revenues from that abatement. So this overall shows the change to our ending fund balance for the general fund. So you can see, we started with 7.8 million total, that includes the reserves. We're doing, our revenues are now at 3.8, I mean, 13.8 million. Our expenditures are 14.1, and we're ending with 7.6, which is a negative ending or deficit to our general fund of 284,000. And we'll go over that further after we finish the PowerPoint and kind of show the changes over the...
Just survey is clear, is the, that 7,600 ending available fund balance, does that include our reserves?
Correct.
Yeah.
And this is the city overall. So this presents the whole picture, which is the general fund, all our utility funds, which is water sewer, our connected communities. And then we have the special revenue funds, which are our development impact funds where we collect for capital items and any special revenues for grants and stuff like that. So as you can see, we're, we're proposing an increase to our revenues and resources. And then we're proposing an increase also to our expenditures. And this slide shows specifically kind of the major funds that we're proposing the changes to. As you can see here, it shows 1.6 changes to the revenue. The major changes will be in our water and our capital funds. Water fund, when we adopted the budget, we had not accounted for the rate increase that went to effect July because it had not been approved when we adopted the budget. So we're making the correction for that. And then we've had some reimbursements from Lockheed for water purchases that we have to, to deal with water contamination. So to blend the water, we have to, and Lockheed reimburses us for those.
What was the previous slide to this one?
This one is our...
Is that in our... Oh, I see it, okay, I got it, I got it.
And you may notice there's some dollar differences because when, on this slide I show revenue and resources and on the next slide it's just purely the revenues that we're highlighting. There could be changes in some of the resources, so that could make the difference in those numbers there.
On that previous slide though, you know, somebody's going to ask a question. The beginning available fund balance for the city was 21 million, mid-year was 23 million. How could it go up when...
It actually, yes, it went up. There's, in that total, you'll, our change in our general fund balance and then in any other funds, because when we ended last year, those were estimates balances. So now that we have actual balances, we change them to accommodate that, so.
So...
It reflects the audited figures that come in and before that, it's kind of a guess.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, all right, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it.
So there, there's those changes in there.
Yeah. I was just going to say, a person looking at it quick could say, well, things are improving because it was 21, no, okay.
And that's not, that includes, like I said, the general fund and all the other funds, so.
Yep.
These were our revenues. Our capital fund is the one that's significantly increasing the revenues. That's because we collected on the 24 beds for the hospital that was built next door to us. And then we will be collecting for the project that was adopted for 120 units for the low-mod housing, which the redevelopment will pay to the city. And these are our expenditures. As you can see, these are by funds, we highlight the major funds. So you'll see the general fund, what we requested of 34,600. The other big one is the LLC CP fund, and that is a reappropriation of last year for our commercial connectivity program. We thought we would finish it last year and spend the money last year, but we didn't. So we're carrying it over into this year's budget, so it's a reappropriation of those funds. And we'll have some capital fund expenditures also, and then some miscellaneous other funds that we're requesting. And the bulk of those are either transfers, some additional overhead, costs related to those items. And then here we summarize the change from our beginning fund balance, our revenues and resources, our expenditure uses. So basically, our change in fund balance is actually an increase of 1.7. As I said, a lot of that will be the development impact fees that we collect.
Say that again?
The, the change we're actually adding to our available fund balance of 1.7. And that will be, will be collecting additional revenue for the development impact fees that we weren't projecting to collect initially.
Right. Why is it in brackets says negative?
If it was in brackets, it would be a negative.
Okay, okay, so that's what it would be, is that seen, okay. I was, that's what I was puzzled about, does that, although it's not in brackets, since it said it, does it mean that that's a negative value? Okay. That's just a footnote, should have been outside the box.
Yeah. And then our redevelopment agency. This one tends to fluctuate. This one actually started with a little bit less fund balance. And then we're, we're project, reducing our revenues and we're adding some expenditures to bring us to a lower fund, ending fund balance for the year. This year, you can see, the major reduction will be in the debt service fund, which is our tax increment that we collect and we're projecting. And also, some of these reductions are interest earnings. Interest earnings, as you know, the market is pretty low. And so we've had to adjust over the whole city, our interest earnings projections.
So the fact that that's a negative change is not a bad sign, is it? That's not a bad sign in this case.
We could use money.
We shouldn't go quite that far.
Well, I mean, in fact, it's, it's already a...
I mean, it will impact our ability to repay some of the loans that we have taken.
Okay.
So.
I suppose.
So it does have an impact. And then this is our changes to expenditures. These are actual expenditures, so. And then overall, we're expecting the year to end. And this is mainly on the redevelopment agency, since we have still bond proceeds from 2005 and we're spending those and doing projects, that's where you'll see the, you know, the significant changes. And then prior to the mid-year, we did actually add about $615,000 of additional projects.
The question, the bond proceeds are shown in which number here or they're not?
They would be the beginning fund balance?
They're, they're under the 11, and so they have dropped down to three?
Correct.
Okay, that's including, that's including the, yeah, the 3.5, that is including the bond proceeds though?
Correct.
Okay.
So the amount of money in the RDA that we will have potentially next year for special projects will significantly drop compared to the last couple of years. I think we have to be very frank about that and realize that there are going to be some limitations.
And, okay, so those are bond, that includes bond proceeds. What, is there any further bonding capacity available in the RDA?
At this time, I wouldn't recommend it. We do have loans that we try to repay ourselves. And until we know what the state's going to do to us next year, because the significant art, the significant ability to repay ourselves has been taken away by the state.
So have we, have we sent the state their money, have we, have we sent the state our money yet?
No, it's not due till May 10.
May 10?
Yes, which will, May 10, if we don't succeed in the court, we will have to pay the state 2.8 million.
Does that come out of this 3.5 there?
Yes.
So that leaves us basically...
No, that's already accounted for.
It's already accounted?
Yeah.
So this is on top of that?
Did I read one of the prior slides correctly to show that we have about a 7% drop in tax increment?
Correct.
Okay. So our tax increment's going down as the, as the devaluations of the properties is going. So we have less revenue and the excess revenue over our bond payments is our bonding capacity and it's pretty slim.
Especially when the state is taking 2.9 million.
That's right.
And we, I mean, they've already said they're going to take some next year, but if they succeed and take this year, then who knows what, what they'll come after us for. So, yeah, I'm very wary of assuming we're dead until we really know what the circumstances and if we're successful in the courts. And this is just the summary, you know, we're trying to be very conscientious of our revenue projections and, and our expenditures that we're proposing. The direction has been to be very conservative by the city manager to, you know, spend what we need and don't spend any excess. So we will take that into our next year's budget process. And as, as I mentioned earlier about the general fund, we're going to be using 284,000. And I have included in your packets this general fund budget reconciliation, which kind of goes through the steps of how we've gotten here. And it kind of says where we were at the beginning of the year, where we started. We were at a deficit of 181.5. With budget cuts that we proposed and revenues, we, we were able to cut that back by 127,000. And then there was some new appropriations. Council authorized out reserves of 98,000 for a legal settlement and 30,000 for an emergency generator, which then brought us back up to a negative of 182.5. And then with what we are proposing for the mid-year for the general fund, it's another 102, $102,000. So, so that brings us to our 284.5 for the general fund.
Thank you, Ms. Deanda. Mr. City Manager, any additional comments that you'd like to include in relation to our budget review?
Yes, please. I would like to mention that our revenue, projected revenue already closed. We projected almost $14 million and we off by $67,000. That's less than 4%, so that's, that's very good estimate. And, and so the difference between the, the deficit subtract the settlement agreement, it's only $186,000. And a lot of time is we not spend every penny that was budgeted in the general fund anyway. So I, I think we are doing very good. Again, I'm very frugal and I tell all my department hate that, that just because the budget is approved, I would just go spend the money. So that's the way I've been operating this year.
It also goes to show that pessimistic budgeting sometimes isn't quite pessimistic enough. And we were well-served by our pessimistic budgeting last year. We still miss the mark by a small percentage, but we should continue in that same vein in future years.
Councilman Peterson?
I know of at least 10 or 15 cities around here who would give the right arm to have a budget like ours in the shape that ours is in, I can tell you that. Boy, you read the paper every day and I'm telling you, the people are sure a lot worse off than we are. We've got, I mean, we're in good shape compared to, as far as you can see from here, but I'll tell you that.
I think a lot of people deserve credit for that. And I think that the Budget Committee's done a phenomenal job of keeping us in line. Sometimes we get caught up in just approving numbers, but it was great that we've had Dr. Riggs behind the Budget Committee and we've had multiple meetings and the Budget Committee stepped up like they always have, but with a little bit more authority last year. And we had to re-change some of our estimates. And I think because we've reduced how much money we think we were going to get and trying to decrease the amount of money we're spending, we're finding ourselves in a much better position we've been otherwise. We're still in the negative, but we still have a few months left and we're hoping to make every effort to try to cover that gap. But overall, we're just, we're on the right track. And, you know, unfortunately, I think that, you know, depends on what you read and who you read from, but I don't think things are going to turn around too quickly. And we're going to be kind of in a very tight situation for the next couple of years. So we just have to kind of keep that in mind. But we're still appreciative that we're at least, you know, not able to have to worry about salary cuts or, or any layoffs. All that is kind of behind us and that we just kind of hang in there and hopefully things will slowly turn around, but it's going to be a while, so.
Just to add a few points from my end, again, want to thank staff for all their hard work and agree with Councilman Popescu, Budget Committee and his work and Air Pro Tim Riggsby with them. Again, just very briefly, last year, I think we did make some tough choices with some salary reductions across the board from city manager, council, to every other employee and some targeted layoffs. And when you look at, again, as mentioned, what other cities are facing that put off those decisions and now have huge problems, I think it was wise what was done and come in with a budget that appears to be within one or at most... two percent off of any of our projections so far, is, I think, great work, we're certainly not in fat times, and we're still in lean times, and, you know, depending on what the state does, I, I hope Councilman Popescu's right, we won't need to make any more significant cuts, but I think there's a good chance that we won't need to if things don't deteriorate further, the state doesn't do other things untowardly toward our funds. I just wanted to make one other comment, again, just totaling up, the percentage of our budget from the city budget, just looking at that, that is devoted to public safety, fifty-five percent of our budget goes to police and fire, say, oh, you know, it's a lot of money, well, yeah, but I, I like to look at it, and I think it truly is important to show we're not spending our resources on, you know, administration, on, you know, city council and such things, we're putting the majority of our money where we think is the most important thing, the services that our community need and deserve, and I'm actually glad to see that percentage that high. All right, anything else on the budget at this point? This is, again, informational to bring us up to date where we stand, and I think in general, favorable with at least adequate reserves for the immediate future, and unless there's any further comments or discussion, Mr. Agler, please come forward.
Appreciate the moment, Mayor. Just two questions, the, the money that was then voted for the Save Loma Linda expense came out of the general fund, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was then a hundred thousand dollars that...
No, it's ninety-eight thousand.
Or ninety, oh, excuse me, ninety-eight thousand dollars, okay, that we evidently chose to decrease our general fund by. Secondly, the projected five hundred thousand dollars that at least one councilman sees as an option of relating to, to discontinue the Red Flex contract, that would come out of the general fund as well, right? If that were approved?
Yes.
And that which is now, and that fund now shows about, what, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars? But it appeared in the paper as a possibility, something that Mayor Popescu wants to hold out to the people as something that in March, when we review this, this may be something we need to look at. I just hope that kind of nonsense stops, thank you.
I'd like to correct my good cousin, nobody has proposed spending five hundred thousand dollars on eliminating a contract, that was a posited number by an opponent in the discussions.
Councilman Rigsby, that has been set forward as an option, it's not been voted, so don't pick up straw men, I didn't introduce a straw man, I stated facts, Rig, Councilman Popescu has let the public know that he is still for the people, as in another article, he chose to say that these two councilmen are not, which is just a really invidious way of functioning, I don't understand how people can work with one councilman acting like that. But anyway, regarding the, the five hundred thousand dollars, this is still held out there, as you know, obviously, we probably wouldn't wanna do that and so on, but right now, the political clock is ticking in what he thinks will be his advantage.
And we make hay when the crops are in.
Councilman Peterson?
Just one correction to your number, or in addition to it, and that is, in addition to the ninety-eight thousand we paid to settle that lawsuit, that didn't count our attorney's fees.
Since we're entering a debate, we might as well just point out that at some point, we passed a general plan, and it was passed in spite of the fact that there was some legal issues with it, subsequently, there were two lawsuits the city lost, so there are plenty of mistakes the city has made in the past that's cost the city a lot more than ninety-eight thousand, I think you'll soon find out the city has spent significant amount of money enriching certain campaign supporters, and you'll find out about soon enough.
Okay, there's one item, the council need to approve the revision to the, to the mid-year budget, which is the thirty-two thousand change.
Well, the change is to revenues and expenditures.
I'll move that if we're ready for a motion.
Simply to reflect where we are at the current time, it's, that action's been moved by Councilman...
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion on making that adjustment? Hearing no further discussion, any opposed to approving that to reflect our budget as was presented with that adjustment? It's approved unanimously. All right, anything else on budget that need to take action on? Okay. Consent calendar, we've already taken care of number eleven, I...
Move, a second.
Moved and seconded, I just had one question on number seven, the traffic signals Barton and Mission, I've heard some comments of, you know, it's a tough intersection, we all know that because the roads don't line up perfectly, someone told me the other day, they were going south on Mountain View, trying to turn left on Mission, and sat through multiple lights, finally, and many of them just went through the red, it didn't appear to be working.
This must be happening earlier this week, because Edison, Edison is working on their underground utility, and they cut the, the signal loops, and that's ruined the whole timing on, on the signal.
So that's currently fixed, and then...
Yes, it will be fixed, yeah.
Second, I don't know if there is any, any solution with the, you know, the kind of just one or two cars there in the offset intersection, I'm sure you've probably looked at every alternative, it just still seems a little confusing, I will admit, but I, I don't know, unless somebody has...
It's a tough intersection, because it's offset intersection, but it works pretty good right now, so I keep my finger crossed, so that's...
Well, I guess we'll continue to monitor it and see if anybody comes up with any other better ways to configure it. Councilman Peterson?
As I drive around town, there's two, apart from my, from my point of view, there are too many intersections in this town where the green is too short. I mean, there are places, I'm telling you, I've been watching carefully, there are places in this town where not more, if I'm the second car in the row, I get, I'm already going through on the yellow.
Anderson and Barton are...
Yeah, and trying to make a left-hand turn, or even go straight through, in some places, literally, literally, the second car in the line is already in there.
It just happened this past month, as you can see, right now, we have construction going on at intersection, the traffic signal at, at Barton and Anderson, yes, we have been, received some complaints, so it's getting closer, the, the signal is, a new cross arm is coming in, mass arm is coming in, and starting next week, we're gonna start paving Barton from, from Anderson all the way to Waterman, so the whole purpose of the intersection improvement is to add additional left turn pocket for the eastbound Barton to northbound Anderson, so be patient, it's, it's almost there, yeah.
Looks great, looks good.
All right, I believe I heard a motion and a second to the consent calendar, except for item eleven, which we've already passed, any further discussion on any of the consent calendar as listed? Any opposition to approving the consent calendar? It is approved. Any old or new business that aren't listed here? Seeing none, this brings us to reports of councilmen.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, there was an article in the paper yesterday, some of you may have read, and there was a statement made about the fact that Measure V stopped the projects off of Mission, which was, were known as University Village and Orchard Park, and that's completely false. What stopped those two projects was the fourteen hundred individuals who signed a petition to referendum, a council decision, ultimately, there was a long legal battle, the citizens won, and the council was forced to review it, so it was the citizens that stopped, and there are fourteen hundred signatures of those two projects, not Measure V. What Measure V does is it prevents in the future from seeing similar types of housing that we've seen along Mission, where there are no yards, it has seventy-two underscore for lot sizes, what Measure V also does is prevent overdevelopment of the hills, if it wasn't for Measure V, you would see some major efforts up there to, in spite of purchasing land, to still try to put as many houses as possible, as close as possible, along Beaumont and some of the other Vista areas, so that's what Measure V did, and I just wanna make sure that the people are clear, it, it gets repeated over and over again, and people think it's a fact, and I think there's also, the numbers keep getting bigger and bigger as to how much it'd cost the city that those projects were not approved, I think those numbers are wrong, there's still development that can take place there, but it's gonna be development that's a little bit more in unison with what the community wants, especially since we did approve to put in a sixty-acre park and open space in that area, not everybody on the council is in agreement with that, there are those on the council who felt that that was too, were saving too many oranges, and we need to replace them with apartments, well, there's still an effort to do so, and I just wanna make sure that people are aware of that.
Councilman Zepper?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think the thing that is important for the community to recognize, and I appreciate that there's gonna be a little bit of discussion back and forth here in the dais, the citizens last year, it's been actually a year and a half now, I guess, almost, approved a Measure T which, which protected the hills, the part that the city had purchased of sixteen hundred and seventy-five acres approximately, and had overwhelming support, and I, I appreciate that there can be differences of opinion on what is protecting the hills, but most authorities and, and experts will, will tell you that having public ownership over the open space and having the public make a vote like that is the strongest protection you can have, as long as the public wishes to keep it an open space, it will remain that way because it can't be changed without a public vote, and that's something I hope we all support, but I, I think that that, the South Hills Preserve is receiving more recognition as time goes on, as being a very valuable asset, and I think twenty, thirty years from now, that's gonna be considered a remarkable park, open space area for the city to have preserved, and I'd like to think we're all on the same side on that, thank you very much.
Only a comment I had was, I just think looking at maps like we had this evening, when we looked at the city map in relation to some of the different ownership and its potential financial implications can be misleading, and I've heard, I think, not tonight, but I've heard others interpret it in ways that I think is not correct, obviously, there was a big section on the map through the center part of the town with the university that's nonprofit, and a number of churches scattered around, and I've heard statements, again, not tonight, not from anyone here, but, you know, problem why Loma Linda has financial challenges, all that nonprofit land, well, again, I'd just like to share my viewpoint, let's say all that university property and the churches were like some other bedroom communities, we waved our magic wand, we put housing in there, maybe some apartments, you know, is that gonna leave our city worse or better off financially? I maintain it would make our financial position significantly worse, especially as we've heard the eleven cents on the tax dollar, property tax capture, yeah, we might get a small amount of additional revenue on property tax, but it would be pretty small, when you look at all the business that is brought into town by those institutions, when you look at other funds that come through sales tax, through the mercantile, et cetera, I am convinced that having those nonprofit entities is a great benefit to us economically, not to mention culturally, educationally, et cetera, so even if we had that magic wand, we could make that happen, I don't think we'd want that to happen from just a pure financial standpoint, not to mention the others, so again, I think it's a little bit short-sighted and unfair, sometimes when I hear comments that our financial problems are due to the significant amount of nonprofit land that we have. Councilman Peterson?
Sure, I, I would agree with you on that, but I would just like to add one thing, and that is, we need, this city needs a whole lot more of those reasonably high-wage earners that are working there, living in this town, that's what we need, that's our problem, we've got too many of these people who are working here, we are the largest employer, as far as you can see, we're, we're the largest people magnet around here, the problem is, majority of those people aren't living in this town, that's, that's the one thing we're missing, and we've gotta, somehow, we've gotta work toward fixing that, and that's been a big complaint of a lot of people in town, they wish they could live in this town, but they can't.
Air Pro Tim?
I would, I would like to just amplify the mayor's comments by saying, if the university weren't here, we'd be on the Redlands or San Bernardino City Council, there would be no Loma Linda as a, as an incorporated community.
All right, that is the end of our councilman's comments, staff items. No reports from any other officers? If not, we're adjourned, and we've already covered redevelopment, I believe, or did we miss any?
I left something out, we need to give, we need to ask if there are any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
And are there any oral reports from the public on any non-agenda items? Hearing none, then we are adjourned, thank you.